With this terrible virus going on, so I ask for a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. Dr. Glazer, Mr. Appleton? Are you ready? All right, Ed.
I guess it's truly starting, Dr. Glazer, starting. Hi, everybody. Ian, I think that you probably need to share the presentation if you can. I wasn't able to put up the presentation view. You're on the last slide, though, not the first slide. Thank you. No, still on the last slide. There you go. So, welcome, everybody, to the 2020-2021 Public Budget Hearing for the Nutley Public Schools. It is amazing to me what a difference a year makes. Last year, we were struggling to meet mandates. We were struggling to meet a difficult and deliver a difficult budget that was designed to meet the many challenges of operations. After continuous conversations, this same board team and leadership team as last year were forced to make numerous cuts to operations and programming, to not replace staff, and at the same time, asking the community to come together to support the education of the students of Nutley. And as I always say about Nutley, proud of the board, proud of the town, because everyone did come together. And that support has made a tremendous difference. And with that foundation, we're able to bring you a budget tonight that maintains a level of excellence while efficiently maintaining the limited resources available in these very, very uncertain times. And we'll continue to talk about that throughout the presentation. Ian, next slide. It's just a reminder that the budget is the financial expression of the district's educational goals. We work to translate the educational vision and the needs of the community into dollars with this budget. And as a further reminder, Ian, if you'd skip ahead, we do have the Board of Education Goals for 2019, 2020, that by June of 2020, our board members will continue to address overcrowding, aging facilities, and safety and security. We will talk a little bit about that when we address the resolutions that are on the agenda this evening. By 2020, our Board of Education members will ensure that the community understands the district's budget process and enhances community engagement with that process. This is part of that goal and meeting that goal. And as we did our first budget presentation back in March, talking about the process and opening the process up to the community to ask questions and thank all of you for doing that, we've been able to continue with that goal. I would say tonight, I see a number of people logged on to the meeting, and I would encourage you, as we're going through the presentation, to add your questions into the chat. Ian is monitoring that, and we will do our best to answer your questions as we go along. The third Board of Education Goal was that by 2020, the board will help the Nutley community understand the key roles and responsibilities of the board and its members. You have done a wonderful job with that, presenting by the attorneys, presenting by the School Boards Association, attending your annual professional development, doing a public reading of the ethics to truly help the community understand your role in developing policy, in approving the budget, and all of the other operations as we go forward. Excuse me. And finally, by June 2020, the board will ensure that proper policies, processes, and resources to achieve the district goals are available through the financial sustainability. And this is, again, part of what we're doing here tonight. Our district goals are by using multiple data sources. We use that data to drive instruction, closely monitor curriculum and new programs, district scheduling to foster professional growth and help improve student performance. We report on that at almost every meeting. You heard some of our program reviews at the last meeting. And in our next meeting, you'll hear from Mrs. Locan Solo and Mr. Bania our performance reports for this year. We'll also be analyzing data and designing a comprehensive pre-K to 12 approach to student-staff health and wellness, resulting in a positive culture and climate for all. Our Strategic Plan Committee on Health and Wellness has continued to meet even while we're working remotely and working with our Department of Guidance and school counseling, with our partners in the community to make sure that even during these most difficult and challenging times, all of our community members receive any of the health and wellness support that they might need. Additionally, by June 2020, communications enhance between all stakeholders and district partners. Think you know, we've updated not only the website but social media. Ms. Greco has done a tremendous job with that. And by doing these virtual meetings, we've increased the number of people at our meetings substantially. So that's also a positive. I would also just like to, while we're in here, shout out that the Maroon and Gray has continued to grow and be published monthly, which with the student voices adding to the communication of what's happening in the district has been a wonderful addition. And finally, by 2020, the district will collaborate with local, state, and national organizations, as well as utilize internal resources to evaluate current procedures and identify new methods for security, while continuing to promote that philosophy of see something, say something. Again, we'll talk a little bit more about this when we get to the resolutions portion later in the meeting. Ian? We're also guided by our five-year strategic plan goals. We think that we've covered these over again as part of our district and board goals. They are in four areas: curriculum and programs, health and wellness. Ian, you can skip ahead again. Safety and security, as we just talked about, and of course, configuration and infrastructure. And each of these set of five-year strategic plan goals help us guide the work that's happening in the district through June of 2023. So, again, we do our best to interpret those goals through the budget process. We've already done our tentative budget approval in March. That has already been reviewed by the Executive County Superintendent. I think most of you know that Josera, who is the Essex County Executive Superintendent, is recused from Nutley. So ours is reviewed by Mr. Juan Torres, who is also the County Superintendent in Huntington County. We have this meeting to come before the community and the Board of Education another time, to ask questions, to answer questions, to look at some of the details that are involved in the budget. And then finally, we do have the Board of Education adopting our budget so it can go to the state for final approval and state aid assistance by, I think the deadline is May 19th. Ian? Thank you. And just a reminder, since we do have the board's role as an important part of all of our goals, the board's role in this process is to set the priorities that comes through your Board of Education Goals that are set at the retreat. I can't believe we're going to be getting ready for another retreat and looking at those goals, to look at monitoring our progress towards deadlines. A bit challenging this year with our interim BA and our remote operations. But I have to say, thank you to everybody for working through committees and asking questions to make sure we could get to this point tonight, to be able to communicate to the community. Again, this is our second budget meeting with the community. And finally, after a budget is approved, to be able to do what's necessary through oversight, to make sure that what we are budgeting to do for the students, for operations, is in fact implemented. So again, thank you to each board member because you do that in an exceptional way, not just at the meetings where the public sees you or during the committees that we report on, but honestly, every day. I think people would be surprised how often we have ongoing conversations about the operations of the district. So thank you all. Ian? This is the beginning of the actual numbers part of the presentation. And at this time, I'm going to mute and ask Mr. Appleton to run us through the revenues that make up the district budget.
Okay, I don't know if we have technical difficulties. Let me begin. School budget is organized in various sections, primarily through what is termed as fund accounting. Fund accounting being specific roles and specific charges for that particular area of the business office. There is the debt service account, which essentially is the school district's mortgage account. You hear about that maybe three, four times during the course of the year, one being tonight. You may see them at mid-year, when we go through the mid-year review, and then again in June, when we have the closeout. The second funds are what is called special revenue accounts. These are accounts where the funding source is either a state government, state governmental agency, or the federal government. Accounts within the special revenue fund would include all of your non-public school grant allocations and assistance. On the federal side, there are all of the Title I programs, which supplement the district's ongoing operations for basic skills instruction, English as a Second Language instruction, staff improvement through professional development, drug-free schools, which include drug prevention, as well as your monitoring of kids. A major account within the special revenue fund is your IDEA, which is supplemental assistance for our special education programs. The... The revenues are made up of various sections. But frankly, most people are amazed when they see the number of account breakdowns that we have in the school district for revenues and specialty expenditures. What we have is the use of fund balance. The district has surplus monies, which it has accumulated within the roles that the State Department of Education has laid out. And the accumulation of those monies on an ongoing basis also allows us to reinvest those monies through the school district and hence receive some tax relief with the use of these monies. And we'll talk about that a little bit more. Our tax levy, which is easily the single most numerous in total accounts of any of the other areas. The tax levy here in Nutley is $59,208,160. This year, that includes that the district has taken its whole allotment of 2% of the tax levy. And we've also taken advantage of a bank cap, the monies that had accumulated to the board, and they had the opportunity to use in a prior year, but chose not to. And those monies are now being applied to this budget. Other accounts of note: tuition, whether that be for tuition from parents or from other school districts. Miscellaneous, which is a wide breadth of different things, could be fees. It could be prior year appointments, prior year refunds from other school districts. It could be adjustments to prior year tuition accounts, whether they were refunds for expenditures that the district made, or they are refunds coming from the board with monies accumulated as revenue. State aid, $8 million. That along with the tax levy make up the largest majority of money coming to the district. Extraordinary aid. This was handled a little differently this year. We anticipated $794,000 this current year. Next year, we did not budget any of the extraordinary aid that we truly anticipate, but it doesn't show on the books here. The reason for that is we are obligated to use its additional fund balance for the coming school year. It was to the district's advantage for us not then to obligate the extraordinary aid in this coming year. We'll allow that to come over as a miscellaneous revenue. There are some advantages to the board in terms of utilizing the cash and having it available for future endeavors next school year. Dr. Glazer? Ready for here? All right, let me...
Ed, do you want me to take over? Do you have more to talk about with the revenues?
Yeah, the rest of revenues, if you want to hit some of your budget highlights.
Sure, I'm happy to. Ian, could you just go past the slide? Thank you. So, as I said at the beginning, this budget is very, very different than what we had last year. There really was very little to discuss and almost no room for addition in this budget. I think the community knows, and the staff certainly knows, that we completed our negotiations with our educational association. The increases in that contract are included in this budget. We've also had tremendous increases to our health insurance and benefits. That ate up almost all of the 2% that Mr. Appleton just talked about. And we looked to the bank cap, the 4%, to be able to add to some of our essential budget items. Very few this year. Again, not at all the same as what we may have seen in previous years. But in these uncertain times, we really need to be frugal as we go forward in this process. So, for this year, there are not additional programs per se, but staffing that allows us to continue the programs that we have. The first position change would be our part-time science position at Nutley High School, making that position full-time. Allowing that position to be full-time maintains our very successful health sciences program. It allows us to continue that piece of vocational education, as well as continue to work with Rutgers University in that program. Additionally, the add of a culinary teacher. I would say that our culinary sciences program is more than popular. Dr. Riley and our chefs, not just teachers, but our chefs, have grown that program to such a place that we could probably, with an additional staff person, have almost 100 students join in CTE electives, career and technical education electives. That's a huge boost for the program. We did hear Dr. Riley speak at the last board meeting through the program review of some other areas that we would like to grow this program. So this is, what I'd like to say, a very wonderful first start, an exciting first start. And finally, also at the high school, the addition of a science teacher who is special education certified. This has been an issue. You know, very often in special education, we hire teachers with certification. They get pulled from the special education program to do general education, or they're not available in a certificate area that's required, for instance, in a science. This dedicated staff person allows us to have students participate in science electives where they might not previously. And that level of equity and that attention to inclusiveness is something that we've committed ourselves to over the years, not just culturally responsive teaching, but equity of curriculum and instruction, inclusiveness for all students, and the move just a little closer to working on that goal. Believe it or not, those are the only additions to the budget for this year. What we've done, as Ed said, and I'll talk about in the next slide, Ian, if you can go to that slide, is to be able to appropriate funds in slightly different ways and to be able to position ourselves in these very difficult times for the town, difficult times for the school funding, difficult times for our country, to be able to make these appropriations so they're designed not only to ensure our survival, our educational and instructional survival, but our ability to continue to provide high-quality instruction. So, this pie chart's a little different than what we've seen previously and even a little different than what we shared in March. Usually, it's a very difficult slide to read. It has all of the different accounts and percentages by account. We changed the pie chart up this year to reflect expenditure rather than account. Not only do I think it's easier to read, but I think that the breakdowns are very much more clear for you with the percentages. As you can see, regular instruction, which is that part of our budget that services students who are taught in the district in grades pre-K to 12, is the largest part. That does include teacher salaries. It does include classroom materials. You are not surprised, I'm sure, that the next piece of the pie is employee benefits. Those employee benefits also include our retirement plan contributions, not just our health plan contributions, as far as other contractual obligations to the various units. That's also under this employee benefit piece. Followed by special education. That's instruction to our in-district students, pre-K to 12, who have special needs. And again, that's in-district. Our student services, which is nursing. It's our related services, our extraordinary piece, as well as our school counseling. Then, following that is administration. That's me. That's all of our principals, coordinators. That's everybody at the office and in the business office. That's our information technology team. All of those pieces in administration, and all of those pieces are non-affiliated, not part of a collective bargaining unit. That follows by the operation of the plant. And again, that's a technical term, but basically, that's our custodial and maintenance services. That's what we do with grounds. That's where, when we've added security, we've added security to this piece of the pie of the budget. Tuition, which you see coming up at the top of the pie chart. That's all of our out-of-district placements, for whatever reason, a student is out of the district. Pupil transportation in Nutley is our daily routes. It's field trips. It's travel to our athletic events. All of that comes under pupil transportation. Other programs are our co-curricular programs. That's where the athletics budget falls. Keeping around the circle, you have other instruction, which is our strategies program. You might think of it more as basic skills. That's where we have our ESL programs, our programs for English language learners, those kinds of other instructional programs, gifted and talented. As we continue up to the top, you see capital outlay. Capital outlay is not the same as our capital reserve. It is major maintenance projects. It's big equipment purchases. It's those things like server refreshing or phone system, those things. And finally, you have staff services. And staff services encompasses our professional learning and our curriculum improvement. So, each of those expenditures represent the total operations of the district budget. Ian? Finally, we come to the budget resolution. Ed, I don't know if your mic is on or not. If you want to say anything about, again, the general fund or any of this, and then I can get to the nitty-gritty piece at the tax levy.
No, we're pretty straightforward with what we have here. Again, as I started this evening, I'm talking about the various sections of the accounting that the district must adhere to. We had a general fund, $71 million. Again, that's primarily supported by local taxes and state aid. Special revenue fund, monies that are received from state and federal government for specific programs and must adhere to those programs. And those monies are not mixed with any other funds. And debt service, the district's mortgage accounts, if you will. We also have the general fund tax levy, $29,200,000. And the debt service, again, your mortgage. That's $2,600,000. This is probably the most important part to the large majority of people in town here. And that is, what does it mean to me? What's going to happen to my wallet? General fund tax levy. An average assessed home of $319,343. We see a new piece of $176,143. Debt service tax levy on the same average home, $319,343. We'll see a decrease of $12.76. And the total tax levy on the average assessed value home of $319,343 is a net increase of $163.09.
And I just, if I can, I want to give you a little bit of color on that because the numbers and the equations are straightforward, but the context is not necessarily. So while we dropped from a 4% increase in budget last year to a 2.7% increase this year, including the bank cap. And while the tax levy has gone down from this year, from last year to this year for the schools, the township, the average assessed value of a home in Nutley has dropped by $905. And additionally, the average ratables, meaning the number of properties available to be taxed in Nutley, has dropped by more than $22 million, $22,415,800, to be exact. So, those changes in the ratables, those changes in the value of the assessed home actually changes the equation for determining the tax levy. And that is reflected year to year. So I want people to understand that. And if this is an area for question, that you can ask those questions. And if this is an area for question, that you can ask those questions also for the public. We did not break this out last year, and I wanted to make sure that we provided this information because we are always asked, what in particular does the bank cap add? And that equates to thirty-nine dollars and fifty-four cents per year on the average assessed home. I don't think that there's... Ed, do you have anything else that you wanted to add?
No, thank you.
Any more questions? No? No? Right, Ian, are there... I didn't see anything come up in the chat box, but that doesn't mean it didn't.
There have been no questions.
Dr. Glazer and Ed, are you done with your presentation?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much for a very comprehensive report. Board members, do you have any questions on this budget presentation right now? We now come to the portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address this board. In this section, we allow questions or comments on the budget only. Our board regulations, number six oh one, allows twenty minutes for these communications. Each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. Speakers may speak more than once only after all others wishing to speak on a topic have been heard. All statements will be directed to me as the chairperson, and no one may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please do remember to state your name and address each and every time you address the board. Does anyone have any questions at this time? Ian, do we have any questions?
There are currently no questions in chat.
Thank you, Ian. Lisa Dancheck, will you move the budget approval, please?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to move the approval of the 2020-2021 budget. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the budget for the 2020-2021 school year, which includes the use of bank cap in the amount of four-hundred-and-one-thousand, three-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars to meet the minimum educational standards. This need must be completed by the end of the budget year and cannot be deferred or incrementally completed over a longer period of time. General fund, seventy-one million, eight-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand, one-hundred-and-seventy-four dollars. Special revenue fund, one million, eight-forty-two, four-sixty-seven. Debt service fund, three million, four-sixty-two, three-hundred. Total budget, seventy-seven million, one-thirty-nine, nine-forty-one, of which the following amount shall be raised by local tax levy. General fund tax levy, fifty-nine million, two-oh-eight, one-sixty. Debt service tax levy, two million, six-fifty-four, four-fifty-nine. Total tax levy, sixty-one million, eight-sixty-two, six-one-nine. Be it further resolved, the complete budget for the 2020-2021 was advertised in the Nutley Sun on April 23rd, 2020, is on file in the Business Administrator's Office and posted on the district website.
Thank you, Mr. Dancheck. Thank you, Mr. Cornisella. I don't see it on here, but I think we need a roll call now, correct?
Yes, Mr. Cornisella?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck Martin?
Yes.
Mr. DiMeo?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
No.
Mr. Riley? Mr. Scolera? Miss Sarrow?
Yes.
Mr. Kazinsky?
Yes. Thank you very much, board members. We now continue with our regular agenda. Mr. Cornisella, can I have the administration resolution, please?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to move Administration Resolution One is written.
Oh, second.
We have a second on it?
Yeah, I second.
Roll call, please, Mrs. Kukus.
Mr. Cornisella?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck Martin?
Yes.
Mr. DiMeo?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mrs. Scolera? Miss Sarrow?
Yes.
Kazinsky?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Ferraro, will you take the Finance Resolution, please?
Can I, Mr. Kazinsky, can I just make a comment before Mr. Ferraro? I just want to remind the public that there are two resolutions under Finance. Resolution number two and Resolution Number... Those resolutions are allowing the Board of Education to formalize their intent to move forward with projects from the capital reserve and projects from the maintenance reserve. Those resolutions are not new information. I think that the Board has done an amazing job formalizing their intent to do these. I just would put with the caveat that is in that resolution, barring any future financial requirements for the operations of the district.
Thank you, Dr. Glazer. Thank you, Dr. Glazer. Board members, if you remember to turn off your mics if you're not speaking, there's still quite a bit of feedback. Mr. Ferraro, can you take Finance Resolution, please?
Yes, Mr. President, I move Finance Resolutions one through three as written.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President, I would like to make a statement.
Sure, of course.
To allocating funds from capital reserve. I'd like to thank the Board for finally moving forward with Yanacor School's secure entrance. Waiting for that for many years, and that's the last piece of the puzzle, these secure entrances. So I thank everybody for their efforts with that. And obviously, we need to do the Oval as well, which is incomplete. This repair needs to be done as soon as possible. And we know what the floor looks like in the media center. So it's all very worthy projects for that reserve money to be spent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Those are points well taken. Again, any more discussion? Roll call, Mrs. Kukus, please.
Mr. Cornisella?
Yes.
Mr. Clark Martin?
Yes.
Mr. DiMeo?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Scolera? Miss Sarrow? Yes. Mr. Kazinsky?
Yes. Mrs. Sarrow, will you take Policy Resolution, please?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to move Policy Resolution One as stated.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, Mrs. Kukus, please.
Mr. Cornisella?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck Martin?
Yes.
Mr. DiMeo?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mrs. Scolera? Miss Sarrow?
Yes.
Mr. Kazinsky?
Yes, thank you again. Hearing of citizens, that this section will allow questions or comments on all school-related matters. Our regulations allow thirty minutes for these communications. Again, each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. Speakers may speak more than once only after all others wishing to speak on a topic have been heard. As I stated earlier, all statements will be directed to me as the chairperson. No one may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please do remember to state your name and address each and every time you address the board. Does anyone have any questions? Ian, are there any general questions?
There have not been any chat.
Thank you. Any old business to come before the board? Any new business to come before the board?
I have some. Oops, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
You're sure? So, and I actually figure you're all going to want to talk about what I'm talking about. But for our staff who returned from Spring Break Monday, today is the beginning of Teacher Appreciation Week. And I have to say, I usually have a cute poem, or a song, or a little picture, or a meme. And I'm struggling because for what our staff has done in a short period of time, there really are not enough words. What they bring to the district, to our students, to the community on a regular basis is above and beyond. And I think that not just recognizing them, but finding a way to honor them as we continue our remote instruction and get back to our regular operations will be really important. Our partnership with the Educational Association of Nutley is very, very strong. And on a sometimes daily basis, I work with their leadership, Michelle Quisantello, Mike Stoffers, Philip Cicliotano, to continue to make sure not that the staff necessarily does what they need to do. They're professionals. They're amazing. But that everything that we need for our students is happening, and they make that happen. And I could not let the meeting go without that. In addition, Friday was Principal Appreciation Day. I don't know that I've heard of that, but definitely a worthy holiday. I spoke, at least via email and in person, to a couple of our principals. And again, what they have done with their staffs, with their schools, and within the district is tremendous and amazing. There is no appreciation for central office staff, for business administrators, for IT managers, but all of you, again, what you add to the Nutley learning community is truly beyond words. I really don't think that I have the words to express how blessed we are as a district to have each of you. I'll just leave it with, I'm grateful for you every day, and I'm looking forward to seeing you more than on a screen sometime soon. Thank you all.
Thank you, Dr. Glazer. Mrs. Clark?
Yes, I just have a question from a parent who wanted to know, now that we're closed for the rest of the year, when will the students be able to get their things from the school? When will the teachers be able to get in there and, you know, gather whatever items? I'm really thinking in terms of elementary school, too. Although, it can, you know, it also applies to middle school and high school, but mostly elementary.
So, Mrs. Clark, the schools were closed for health and safety for the rest of the year. We have not had any students or staff in the building since March 16th. And I don't anticipate that we will have any students or staff in the building for the remainder of the year without some kind of protocol or schedule. Working with Mr. Perigi, our Director of Buildings and Grounds, we expect to come up with a plan following our usual protocol, just bringing it forward a little bit and adding a little bit to the process. Usually, at the end of a school year, students would clean out their desks, their lockers. Staff would clean out their office spaces. And then the custodial team from grade seven to 12 would go in, clean out the lockers. We change the combinations. We're going to continue with those protocols, but find a way to return everybody's belongings to them. I'm not sure if that looks like bagging and tagging. We've been so far doing porch delivery. We've done really well with no-contact trade-out with technology. And I think in the coming weeks, we'll be able to develop a plan where everybody is able to get their belongings back. In particular, we know that our seniors have some things they're looking for, eighth graders or sixth graders, and we'll pay particular attention to get them done, but as well, make sure everybody gets what they need. I think it's going to be a challenging few weeks because even though the announcement came, and we certainly have published that for everybody, that the buildings are closed, schools are not closed, and the programs that we have going forward have not yet been canceled. We're still waiting to hear from the Department of Education and the governor on any summer programs, for instance, our extended school year program or strategies program. And those announcements will also have an impact on if we're having building use and if we need to do something different as far as returning those materials. Hope that helped.
Thank you, thank you.
Any other new business, Mr. Scolera?
I spoke to the president today, Mr. Kazinsky and Mr. Riley. I'd like to present an idea for an alternative for high school graduation. I've been tracking quite a few across the country and knowing friends and personnel. And I'd like to talk about one that could be like a drive-by. So I hate to use the example, but you see many priests, they're out in the parking lot with their mask on and their gloves, and the people pull up their mask on and gloves, and he gives the communion in the car, puts it in their hand, and goes. I'd like to present that we use the municipal parade group. We close Franklin Avenue to all personnel from Church Street to Williams Street. The board event could sit up on a hill. We could have music playing or a few instruments in the background someplace. Dr. Glazer could be down with the certificates in their hands. The driver would be the graduate in their gown, drive up. The parents, because they're the family, could be in the car. She could hand it off. We could be running a video on this and then play. And then, from all the rest of the parade route with proper social distancing, people and grandparents could stand out there with a sign as they drive the whole parade route around the town and see signs, wave to their grandparents or whatever. And I think that would really be, and I've done some other planning on it, but I think that would be a great way to do it, show the kids we respected it. You know, they did something this past week. I didn't know about it. I don't know who did know about it. To have a parade around town, weren't supported by anybody. I can see that. I went out and said, I didn't know about it. They said it was posting. But I think we need to do something, and I think that way, we're self-distancing, there's control. The board members can sit on the hill, wave to each one as they go by. The grandparents can see it, the parents are in the car. That's my proposal.
I was just going to say, thank you, all ideas. There's a committee working on that. Some of those committee members I can see on our meeting tonight. So thank you for sharing, and I think that it's a great suggestion to add to a bunch of wonderful things. Thank you.
Dr. Glazer, you mentioned there's a committee working on it. Are there board members on that committee?
Right now, it's really your high school leadership. And for instance, what Mr. Scolera talked about, the drive-by that happened the other day, none of us, I wasn't aware of it, but I was made aware of it by Mrs. Corella at the township. That was done by the student body president. And I'm pretty sure that Mr. Williams, Mrs. DeVore, and Mr. Terry are working with that team, as well as Ian B. Meister and Mr. Conti, our television teacher. You have a lot of people who are very, very invested in making sure that everybody feels honored. And again, as that grows, as we get a little closer, we're still kind of far away to make some decisions. I think that that committee will continue to grow. And I see Mr. Williams is on tonight. I see Mr. Riley's on tonight. Mr. B. Meister, we know, is on. So you have people that have hurt your desire and your excitement.
And I would implore you to be sure we do have a board member on that committee.
Mr. Williams looks like he's going to speak, and I'm sure he'll...
Williams? Hi, everybody. Yes, that's great. We have been looking at a lot of different ideas. Obviously, the big piece here is social distancing. I think that goes better than some of the proposals to have it in August over two separate nights, but that sounds like a great idea. I would love feedback from everybody here. You know, we already have some ideas on how we can do the other pieces, too, as well. So yeah, let's get everybody going.
So, Mr. Kazinsky, if we could, I don't know if Mr. Williams will, but I'd love to be involved in some of that.
Yeah. My suggestion certainly would be that yourself and Mr. Riley should be on that committee to have your input.
Thank you.
Any other new business?
Yeah, Mr. President, refunding. I would like to strongly suggest that as part of our new program for facilities, beginning in September, that over the summer, we should... that over the summer, we should have wall-mounted hand sanitizers in every classroom. So, I hope that we have funds for that in this budget, something that we really need to move on quickly.
Another good point tonight. I agree, and I'm sure that Mr. Perigi's heard that in the superintendent, so it'll be on their agenda, and I will follow up on it, as you will. Any other new business? Coming from me, some new business. I was around town today. I was at Radcliffe School when the Parks Department was putting up some new cherry trees in front of Radcliffe School. I want to thank that department, certainly Frank DiMeo, but that department for the job that they did in conjunction with our own people. I was then at Lincoln School where they were cutting the grass, and I think they were going to Washington or another school, but I know that process has started. I know Mrs. Quirk had asked about it, but I saw it in action today, and I actually spoke at a distance to a couple of the people that were working there, and they were happy to get back into some type of routine again. So, thank you for the job that they do and have done for us all along. Any more new business? Dr. Glazer, I don't know that we're going to go into executive session. Do I need to read this or bother just adjourn?
I don't have any motion to adjourn, so I think you just motion to adjourn.
Okay. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very much so. Be careful and be safe.
Thank you. Bye-bye.